Oh, standing, I'm gonna go ahead and ask him if he'll leave us in the flip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on our agenda, we'll call this meeting to order. There is a quorum of council members present. The first thing is the council meeting minutes of March the 8th and the monthly bills.
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
We five oh with Mr. Stipes absent. Under our recognitions portion tonight, I'm gonna ask Court Hall if he will make a presentation with me to Laura Williams who NRV Cares. And this is our Child Abuse Prevention Month designation, so. Laura? And I'm gonna give Laura a minute after it's over. Especially, we're gonna get a lot over here.
Ms. Williams, how are you?
Good to see you. Thank you.
For those of you that might not know, this is Williams, and I'm saying that correctly. This Williams is the executive director of NRV Cares. And every year about April time, we see all of the PIMAs that go up all around New River Valley, they go up in Christiansburg, Blacksburg, all throughout the area. And it's not just simply for decorations, not to be free and look nice outside, but it's in recognition that April is really a concerted effort on behalf of a lot of localities and really frankly across the nation. It's actually a national movement to recognize child abuse prevention and what things we can do as a community-based setting to help to combat that. And that's what the PIMAs are assigned, really it's a symbol of really innocence, youth. You would know this much better, you speak with much better than I could. But it's simply, it's very much evokes a childlike memory when we see it. It's a very emotional thing when you see, you know, your blood, you know, whether it's spins, you just, you can see a little child doing that. And that's why they use that as the symbology and the symbolism behind that. But every year, I'm very proud that Christiansburg's gotten behind this and in conjunction with our community partners, our localities, our adjacent localities, and we recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month here in the town of Christiansburg. And with that being said, Ms. Williams, I'd like to read a proclamation that we want to recognize NRV Cares, I mean, I'm sorry, April as Child Abuse Prevention Month again for the town of Christiansburg, and we'll start. And states that whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community goal that depends on involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas child malt treatment can occur when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and without the ability to cope, and whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable and are engaged in support of community, and whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships, this is crucial, because of partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Christiansburg, Virginia, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls, I'm sorry, and does call upon all citizens and community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in community efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and neglect and strengthening the community in which we all live. Ms. Williams, thank you very much for your efforts, and I know what you all do on a daily basis. And again, on behalf of the town of Christiansburg, on town council and the mayor, we'd like to present you this proclamation.
All right, if I get the course together, act like you like each other. Ready?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Now, Laura, would you like a minute to explain your upcoming PIML promotion?
Sure, sure. So just to give everyone an idea of what PIMAs for prevention are, it is a nationwide campaign that we do along with all sorts of other child abuse prevention agencies throughout the country. And Court really covered it really well by talking about the reason the PIMAs chosen is really because of the whims of the major that childhood should be. And the town of Christiansburg does a tremendous job of supporting our efforts and supporting children and families and strengthening families in the community. And so I would really just like to take a moment to invite you all to participate in our PIMAs prevention campaign. You are welcome to purchase our PIML gardens through NRV Cares. You can just give us a call at the office or certainly come to our website, nrvcares.org, and get more information that way. And I would also invite you all to wear blue on April 4th. It's Monday, April 4th. It is a national, it was a statewide initiative, Wear Blue Day, where we invite everyone in our community to wear blue and demonstrate our commitment as a community to a child abuse-free environment. So, thank you all so much. I appreciate everything that you all do.
Such a pleasure.
And also, I think we will have banners. Randy is executive director, one in front of town hall, the one at the square, and they will step all up to that.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mayor, if I could maybe say one quick thing, and only because I know.
Yes, certainly, certainly.
In recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, I want to invite everyone in the community. I'm glad we're, this is one of the few times, I guess, I'm glad that we're being filmed. The, I want to say it's the first Thursday in the month of April of Plaski County at the general district court. They're gonna do the Child Abuse Prevention Program, and I believe this year we have a special young lady who can speak from a position of experience. And that will be, of course, on the, at six o'clock that evening on, this is the first Thursday, for some reason I'm drawing a blank on the date. Seven, thank you. And then finally, also in Montgomery County, we started last year, we're having the last Thursday of the month of April at the second floor of JDR courtroom. It'll be the one down next to the Combs Attorney's Office. We'll have a speaker on mental health from NRVCS in addition to a young man who is exceptional, someone who's overcome a lot of adversity. And they'll be doing a presentation there. These presentations are 30 minutes to 45 minutes long. And then there's a slight, a small little get-together afterwards with some food, light refreshments. It's about an hour, but it's great when you, I will say, the one we had last year here was, it was packed. It was a packed house. The mayor was there, and we had members from the community from law enforcement all the way down. And I think it serves a lot, for me, and I'm sure with NRV Cares, to see that solidarity within the community, all these different disciplines united. It's a very, it's a very moving thing. But I just want to invite each and every one of you to that.
We'll keep you posted.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is our citizens' hearing portion of the council meeting, where citizens have the ability, the opportunity to come before council. Questions, comments, things that are on your mind. I would ask that you stand, give your name and address. If you'd like to go to the podium, that's fine. But I would like you to keep your comments to five minutes. Anyone here to address council?
Me. Thank you, council. I'm Kevin Stoner, 1630 Providence Boulevard. I'd just like to address the park situation that was in the paper Sunday about the $33 million proposal for the park. I have a few suggestions that I think that maybe could be a little bit of guidance to the town council. One of the things that you all stated in that article was that you were wanting to build an amphitheater in the park. We have an amphitheater right behind the middle school of Montgomery County here in Christiansburg Middle. It's something that's never really been used, but it's there. It's something that you could build a stage. You have the parking, you have all the amenities that you need out there. I think it's something that should be utilized, the splash park. In my opinion, that's something that has to do with the Aquatic Center. And I know that we've had this discussion, or discussion has taken place about the Aquatic Center and about the Recreation Department. And I think it's something that needs to be worked together. In my opinion, the park behind Kroger's and with the Rosa Parks area right there, I think that would be an adequate place that you could tie in the community. I think we need to get away from black and white here. I think we need to get to the issue of getting everybody together. And right there is a good piece of property that I think that could be utilized in doing something like that, the softball field. The old, or out there at Harkgrader, one time girls could play softball. And then we changed it to the grass and stuff like that, where we wanted it to be a little league facility or whatever. I can't think of the name of the World Series that you had. But my feeling is that we have the Kiwanis Park. And the Kiwanis Park, I know, is something that's been utilized in the town for a long time. My feeling would be is if you could get the Kiwanis Park and maybe utilize it for a girl's softball facility, that'd really fix it up nice. The other thing that was brought up was about a dog park. I know that there's property there behind Southern State, it's in a flood plain. And my feeling would be is that get some property that's in a flood plain where you could make a dog park. You could utilize the property right there, and you could tie it in with the Kiwanis Park. The other thing is that we have the Christiansburg Institute also. And to me, it's an asset that we're just not utilizing near the way we should. And I think in a partnership between the town and the people there with the institute, you have a great amount of property right there. And I think that if you used it recreationally there, and also it would bring people to that facility where they could see about the history and so forth of the town. I would hope that you all would reconsider the funding that you're talking about for this park. I'm not in favor of getting the taxes raised, and I have a feeling that there's some other people here too. I'm all about recreation, and I think that, you know, you've made some wonderful steps. The bridge to the Huckleberry Trail and stuff like that, I think has been fantastic. But I would, I would hope before you put the shovel in the dirt that you look and see some other aspects that could be utilized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stoner. Anyone else to address council? Seeing no one, hearing no one, I'll close the citizens' hearing. Go into staff reports. Mr. Helms, we don't have any schedules for tonight. There will be a couple of points, times within this discussion by mayor and council members. We normally do not try to engage the audience. There is at least one, maybe two, subjects that we do need to engage the audience, so I will forewarn those of you that we may be doing that. Counsel's action on the intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to a request to vacate a portion of Old Mud Pike Road adjoining tax parcels 556A-31, 556A-37, 556A-24B, and 556A-38 along the 1200 block of East Main Street, West Main Street, and in proximity to the corner of the 1200 block of Moose Drive Northwest in the town of Christiansburg. Public hearing was held on March 8th, 2016. Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a comment. Talked with V-Dot, or found V-Dot plans that, and one or a couple of those plans for the working, reworking that intersection to interstate would require some grading, possible grading on this property. So, staff's recommending if do vacate the property, vacate right away, that we maintain a public utility easement, drainage easement, and grading easement on the property.
Will this anyway affect the request for Route 8 Donuts to be able to put up a sign?
No, it should.
Okay. Okay, so we're good to go. I don't know how you're gonna word that, guys, but.
Can you say it one more time, Mr. Helms? You need a, basically need a public utility easement?
Drainage easement and grading easement.
Is there a comprehensive term that would facilitate all that? So, we need a grading, a drainage, and?
Public utility.
Public utility. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we vacate that portion of Old Mud Pike Road as stated on the agenda, but would retain an easement for grading, drainage, and for public utility.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Helms, for getting back to us on that. That was our big question we had last time. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That would be five zero, and one absent. Okay.
Wish them all the best on that new business.
Yes, we look forward to it.
Absolutely.
I bought an expandable belt today, so I can. Proposed Employee Wellness Program. Mr. Huppert, I think this is yours.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd tell you, in terms of the last year, I have noticed that there have been several employees who have had serious health problems. And probably there are more than the ones that I'm aware of. And I was thinking, when they have these problems, the, affects our insurance rate as a town. And it also, I think it affects the wellness of our employees. So I was thinking, and I thought, well, maybe there is some way that we could motivate employees maybe to get more involved in, in maybe some physical activity, and maybe even some more here on your diet, and how we could do that. And I think all of you on council now have a sheet on your desk there that I put together. And so I thought, maybe what we had a good idea would maybe offer employees, I mean, of the town, a $25 bonus. A $25 bonus if you follow some of these things. And council, if you can look on it, is what I had. I had that you could do, I have a walk slash run, and I have 30 miles there. But I think I would like to change that to 40 miles, to do that during a month. And that equals, I had it as 30 miles, which equals about one mile a day, and most of us do that in general. And so I added maybe to 40 miles a day to give it a little bit more, so you could get a little bit more involved. And then the second thing I had here was a swim water walk. And I've changed that to 3,000 yards a month. And these two things, if you would do these, you would be eligible for a $25 bonus. Now, how it work, and you can see here on council, I've got it down here, it would be at the beginning of every month, you would go to one of several people, and you would say, this month I'm going to try to walk the 40 miles. And that person would talk to you for a few minutes, and then give you a sheet that you could follow during the rest of the month. Then at the end of the month, you could go back to that person and say, yes, I have done this. All right, this is what I've done during the month. I think I qualify for a $25 bonus. This would be all, this would be on your own good faith. And it would be, have to be started at the first of every month, and it'll go to the 30th of every month. This, I think, would be, the individuals who do this would be written up maybe in the newsletter. Then they would also have some more information about food and other things to eat. And I think these things like this would get people maybe to say, hey, maybe I can get out and do a little bit of the things, and I maybe get a little bit of bonus out of it. Now, I want to tell you, you might want to say here, and I think maybe people in the council know, I try to be very aware of money. And I've seen there, and I think we will see the financial statements this year for next year, and there is $2,000 in the budget right now designated for wellness of employees. And this could be part of that. I would also say that we would just do this for six months, and just as a trial basis, and see if it worked. Now, some people might say, well, we need to get the personnel office maybe involved in this. And of course, right now, we're a little low on this. And I think that maybe if we started it for six months, and if it went long, then maybe the new personnel person could make adjustments, or change it, or end it, whatever. But I myself think that it's a good idea, and I think as the springtime is coming right now, this is a great time. We could maybe put it in, and maybe we could have it started, if council approved and thought it was a good idea, we could maybe have it started as early as June 1st.
Steve, if I could just comment, I think it's an excellent idea to help to facilitate healthy behavior, healthy lifestyle, which obviously we will recognize in our, perhaps in our insurance rates and certainly workers' comp claims maybe as how people are healthier. However, we've already done that, I think, in the last 12 months. We've given the free classes, I believe, at the Recreation Center. I could be wrong. I think we did that, I'm pretty sure.
Free membership to the.
And the free membership to the Aquatic Center. We've tried to get behind that. And I feel like that what we're doing now is we're just putting kind of money to it, which, it's not about so much the money, but we've already somewhat differentiated between our citizens and town employees by giving those benefits that people want to encourage for not just insurance benefits, but for the health of our employees. But I guess I'm having an issue about incentivizing further now on a monetary basis. But we're already monetarily giving because we're giving them free classes, we're giving them free memberships.
Now, we're talking about, that's for the Aquatic Center.
And they get free class at the Recreation Center.
They get free classes.
And we're not, you know, we're not talking about, most people that want to get out, and this is the thing that you can do on your own. You decide, you know, you get home from work and you say, hey, I'm gonna go out here and maybe walk a mile. I'm gonna go out here and jog a little bit. This is something that individuals can do at an individual time. And to me, thinking the other amounts of money that we're spending, this is just a small amount. And to me, I would think it would maybe interest the employees. And I think another thing is that the employees realize that us on council realize the importance of good health, and that we are supporting this, and we're willing to do a little bit more to show them that we are actively involved in their wellness.
But that logic then would demand that the only way they would know that is if we put money behind it. And I feel like that we've already done that by giving the free memberships to the aquatic and the free classes for the Recreation Center. So, I mean, I feel like that we made it very clear that we're very serious about that. I mean, we've given a different status to our town employees. So, I understand what you're saying, but I still have an issue about giving a monetary bonus for someone to be self-accountable for doing these things. I just don't, I don't see where that's a... And also, I have a problem though with us looking at this as being drops in the bucket, considering a large, our actual budget, because we can do that with anything and argue in the aggregate that, you know, this is not a problem, but in the aggregate, everything is a situation that we're looking at with dollars and cents.
Those are good points. Does anybody else on council have a point of view on that?
I have a point. And my question would be, if we give them $25.
Anybody else on council have a view on this? Anybody else on council have you, let me do my job.
After Sam, I'd like to say.
Go ahead, Sam.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I'm just gonna do my job.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry. I thought I was going out of step here. All right. My question would be, if we can give them $25, and I'm sure that's gonna be taxable, correct, how much are they gonna take home off the taxes? So it's gonna throw them in another income bracket so they could help and hurt. That's all. I'm sorry.
Harry? You got that?
I don't.
Henry?
I'm sure Barry's getting ready to mention this, because I heard he was, but I would like to wait till we get HR to enter in that this is an HR issue. But I would assume that whoever Barry puts in HR, I'd rather get the employee feedback. What they would need is incentives and give us options. I would anticipate Barry and the HR member would do that. I think it's a great premise, but I think it's, you're putting a lot of management, and there's a lot more to this. And Steve, I know you looked into this, and I think it's a good starting point. But I'd like to see us revisit it once we fill that position and hear back from the employees what they would need. But I do agree with Court. I mean, we started this program by giving free memberships, free classes. I take classes at the Aquatic Center, or at the Rec Center. I've been to the Aquatic Center to swim, but those are self-choices that I make. And I guess we'll see what happens once we get that position. And I would like to get some feedback, see what we can do to optimize.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I may, I may close. Since it seems like we have gone that way, I imagine, Mr. Helms, when you are interviewing these people, that you would maybe put this into your interview, you probably already have, that we want somebody who is interested in wellness for the employees.
Well, if I might answer before you do, Barry, I'm really not interested in a PR, in an HR person that's interested in the health and well-being of physical fitness. I'm interested in an HR director that is in all, interested in, looks out for all of the town staff. So, I don't think that's a question that we should answer, ask. Now, Mr. Helms, I'll turn over.
We're in the middle of interviewing, and we've already asked some of the questions, and we have to ask the same questions to all of them.
So we can do that, okay.
And that wasn't one specifically that was in there.
Very good. Push-ups can you do?
I did very well tonight.
I think it's a great idea, Steve, but.
It's got, it's got potential. I think it needs a little bit deeper, even, probably a little bit, delving a little deeper into sub-levels of council. Anything else on that particular matter? Discussion and action on enhanced VRS benefits for emergency medical technicians. Mr. Helms, you got that one?
Yes, sir. I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, gave you some information on it. When council originally passed the enhanced benefits back in 1996, I think, we didn't have any full-time emergency medical technicians. And so they said firefighters and police officers. We hired two full-time medical people, and one of them was already covered from his previous job, so he continued on. But the second one we hired was not covered, and we didn't realize that until VRS looked at the records and said, he's not covered. So, I asked them, I had to do an actuarial study, and they did that for us. And if we, if y'all proceed with it, it'd be $8,000 this year. Around $8,000 this year. And then, basically, I think it'll be about the same each year unless the actual overall rates go up.
This is simply not in the contemplation of the town back to 96. That this is a new, this happened like two years ago, really, when we started getting compassionate billing. I mean, also now we have extra resources to be able to hire these people who are, that's what it is. To me, it looks like more just verging is what was left out 20 years ago.
It is hazardous duty. They're standing out along the road.
That's right.
The chief had to jump over a barricade about a year ago. Chief Coyle, because the car was about to run over him, and he just barely missed him. They're in dangerous situations every day, so that's why I would recommend approving this if you feel so inclined.
I have no issue at all. I would move to approve that, or remove to, or motion that we approve the enhanced VRS benefits for emergency medical technicians.
A second. The motion is in several seconds? I think Henry got in under the.
Sam got me.
Sam got me, okay.
Sam didn't speak.
It was Harry.
Oh, it was Harry. Sorry, Harry, you gotta sound same way down there.
Ooh, wow. So, any, any motion in a second?
That's to approve the resolution that was in the packet.
Okay. That's, that would be fine. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
And how many do we have, Mr. Mayor, as full-time members right now?
Two.
Three, two?
Two.
That's not counting Joe, right?
Counting Joe.
That's counting Joe.
So it's one, we got one that we have to cover. Joe's already covered. Okay, very good. Request for street closures of the Wilderness Trail Festival. This request was presented to council during the March 8th, 2016. Council meeting was tabled until tonight.
I'm not trying to corner the market on the motions, but I think we've heard back that it's, I know that.
I think we had to discuss.
Yeah. I would make a motion that we approve the street closures for the Wilderness Trail Festival as presented to council.
You know, Sam has some questions. I would think that maybe Sam has the first.
Well, I think we have to make the motion before we can discuss.
I'll second it so we can get into it.
Now we can discuss.
Okay, got a motion in a second, now we'll go into discussions.
All right, I did ask for this to be tabbed, 'cause I had this. Okay.
Don't bark.
What is this? I did have several questions, concerns about the streets being closed from, uh, the police department, other departments, any business downtown, and, and from us, I think we all have a letter came from the police department, uh, that said they're, they are not really in favor of it. And I think we were told a couple weeks ago that the police department was in favor of it. Uh, I still have concerns about blocking off the whole street and getting people around town. I don't know if we are able to call the chief up and have him respond to that street, to those concerns from the department.
Yeah, you have a letter in front, I've read a copy of an email, but, uh, that's up to, would you like to hear from, has the original plan been modified from two weeks ago? At one point, it was looking, you were gonna close all of Franklin Street.
It has not been changed from when we were here the last time. The map that Barry put up and adjusted just a little bit, is basically the same thing.
The, the map I received is a little bit different than the one that they've submitted, so this shows stopping on west, or East Main, right at our parking lot, so you can still in, enter and exit our parking lot. Uh, the other map did show on South Franklin going up to just before Papa John's, so their driveway is still open, and stopping at Union Bank, so you can still get in their, uh, parking lot. And then, I had up here a little bit further, and closing part of Dunkley Street, just is closing, um, back behind that, uh, parking lot for Dollar General. Market would be open, have one entrance open, Dunkley Street would be open, so that was a change from what I showed.
Basically, they, they had done it on that end of town before, they closed it off at, so that, that Dunkley is accessible.
I believe that, uh, Union Bank has said that they're gonna be closed that morning, is that correct?
Mr. Rick, you should have an email with your...
And I believe Union has said that they were gonna be, they were okay with it, you ought to talk to them. So, that was our big question we had.
Wells Fargo.
I believe besides...
Wells Fargo, same thing.
Besides the banks, you talked to all the businesses downtown.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, Angles and the, the restaurant there, the, at the antique store and everything, she was excited about it because of additional business.
And both of the banks are all playing on promoting up front that they're trying to sell their customers.
You know, it's our mission to try to get, uh, things of this nature into the town of Christiansburg, and, uh, they do a tremendous job every year. And, um, if it's, it is probably gonna be a little inconvenience for some people, but if we're talking about for twelve hours of the day, while, uh, we're gonna have a lot, we're hoping we'll get six, seven thousand people in there, and it's gonna be something for the, the people of Christiansburg to appreciate. And, and I, I support what they're trying to do.
Can we, Barry, okay, Barry, you show them exactly what a future map would be.
Okay. If you come in here from North Franklin, you'd come down to the, uh, corner Depot in, in North Franklin, you turn and go around Depot, turn onto Radford, and come up Fluger and First Street, back out South Franklin, or the opposite if you come in here on South Franklin.
I remember there was a concern we had about the tech football, that is a tech football game, but I would think, but joy, the Travis is gonna come off of exit one eighteen, take bypass or one fourteen, they're gonna take Depot and go straight through as well. I'm sure we get a sign out that would help direct people that direction, so that way it wouldn't be an influx in downtown anyway. But I was very impressed, I was very appreciative that the, all the local businesses were on board. That was one of the biggest questions we had, especially when we talked about Angles, the Mockingbird Cafe, the Union Bank was kind of a, was speculative at that point, and those things have all been, actually, all those entities have been supportive, not just acquiescing, but they've been supportive of the effort.
Chief Sisson, do you think they add to this?
Maybe just a clarification, Barry, probably need to clarify if you don't mind. You gentlemen received a letter from Captain Ramsey that comes through, and I just wanna, just wanna clarify a few things, and I stand before you as a representative of the Special Events Committee, uh, because that's why we build that committee, because that's their job. They build these events, um, they work to make it happen, they know what logistical it takes, uh, to make these events run. So, what Captain Ramsey and the committee recommended was, I'm gonna articulate myself here. Okay, what it says, leaving North Franklin open, coming northbound and southbound, the committee agrees that a compromise, in their opinion, would be is to leave that open, both north and southbound, but allow them to utilize this area. Now, that would require blockade here and a blockade here, but it was, but it would let north and southbound traffic flow. Uh, that would give them more room in this area and leave the square open area for post office, um, banks, which I know they're, the banks are being very blockaded. Then we, then we have the issue of foot traffic crossing North Franklin with southbound, northbound traffic running. So, I think it's important for the events committee to give their opinion, uh, because that's why we build it, and that's their opinion. Uh, I have spoken with Captain Ramsey, and, uh, as recent as this morning, uh, his statement is, and my statement to council is, if you decide to do it as proposed, we can make it happen. Uh, the logistics of that will be difficult. Difficult may not be the, the best word, it will be cumbersome, uh, but I, I'm optimistic that we can make that happen. We will have detour traffic. The issue with that is, we will detour traffic here at North Franklin Depot. We estimate that eighty percent of traffic will follow this detour. Now, you will have twenty percent of traffic that are not gonna follow that, because there will be signs that says, open to business traffic. So, you're gonna have them get into here and realize, we, we don't, we can't, can't go anywhere. So, then they'll, they'll have to take a right onto Graham and then back out to get on the depot. So, we, we do anticipate some traffic issues here, um, but at the, at the end of the day, my statement would be, if council wants to make this happen, then we'll plan the logistics and create a safe environment. Any questions?
Chief, how many?
Thanks, Ray.
How many, uh, you told me in, in some of our conversations today, you're gonna have, it's gonna take twenty-two of your police officers to take care of the tech game?
On average, we send twenty to twenty-five to do the ballgame.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions, Ernie, Jim, Bill?
Yeah, we, we talked about having two of our members located down at the intersection there, uh, of, uh, Depot and Franklin, just somebody started up this way, just tell them either, is the street closed, or you wanna go up there and party, you wanna go to business. So, that would help take care of some of the chief's concerns.
The thing is, you know, we estimate we have about eight thousand attendees last year. This year, one of the things we're trying to do is expanding the green egg portion, which was very good last year, and it's gonna continue to go. But the portion of Main Street coming down to Town Hall here from the traffic lights, we're looking to put in a special section, which is called Heritage Trades and Skills. And we'll have people from those trades and skills, whether it be a blacksmith laker, a maker, or a blacksmith, or a lace maker, or wood turner, or whatever, but we'll have them concentrate down that area to grow it, and we'll promote that to grow the whole thing. So, we're hoping we're gonna get more than eight thousand this year.
Yeah, I just don't think you can have that, all that traffic we're gonna have walking across Franklin there with traffic going on north of Franklin.
Entertainment and stages, you know, in the past, it would kind of, is that position moving this year?
That, that, we're, we plan on having three stages. Uh, the new stage will be closer to the intersection right there, um, at Franklin and Ma- and Main, with pointing back up, uh, Franklin, and that's where we wanna put the big green egg, 'cause we just didn't have room for it in the medical parking lot last year. Uh, the, and one stage will be in the medical parking lot, just like it's always been. And the other stage is gonna be right up behind the Presbyterian Church, like we had the one last year. They, they liked that one so good because of the shade trees, we're gonna leave that one. And the stage at the medical building will consist of, uh, talent from the schools around, and we're hoping to draw on this group that participates in the children talent contest, and doing is already talking to some of the, uh, the teachers and, and it looks like that's, that's gonna be doing.
It's much better. Okay. No, it was a bigger picture.
And Barry, I take it that, you know, the few weeks before we get to the Wilderness Trail Festival, again, provided this is approved, um, that we can get our signs, the ones that we have, they're mobile, they can be put in strategic areas to alert people that in two weeks, and have the date, you know, they're about to detour, something like that. I imagine too, our PR will be on board with getting some information out to the public coming, so we won't just be throwing it on somebody.
Plan, I think the committee's recommended of putting the signs out at least a week ahead, I'm not sure the exact timeframe. Up near Sonic, up in that area.
Right.
I think we've got limited number of signs for the town. Mr. Shepherd, he, he was there from the streets, I remember his first name, but he's saying they go ahead and get three or four from the state, just get that free.
I guess I have one question for the chief, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, I, I mean, I, I noted that the second, second paragraph of the letter where it says
that, um, business patrons in the downtown area would be, it said significant disruption. That's why I was kind of banking on, with the, the individuals, and those owners, those proprietors, that had talked to the members of the aquanis, had said they were in favor of it, that, that's why I was, that was a big issue for me. Uh, I didn't want to affect them in a negative fashion. But public safety, from a public safety standpoint, with the detours that had been proposed, uh, the way it's gonna be rooted, is that, is that safe for our citizens? I know it might be cumbersome, but I'm, but brass tacks, is it safe for our citizens by using that detour route?
I do not see a public safety, safety issue as far as it relates to safety.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull counsel, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
It's five oh. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Uh, Councilman's, Councilman Collins now, I guess it is, it's a, it's a one-man show. Uh, Street Committee reports recommendations on lot line variation and relocation, tax parcels five two nine two eighty-three B, five two nine dash two eighty-four A, and JBC, for JBC Properties LLC located at two oh six five Fairview Street.
Okay, Mr. Stipes is not here, so myself, Mr. Helm, and the planning director, we all met on this, and these explanations are gonna be short and sweet like me, so this won't take long. The first one here, you see the line coming across there, uh, they wanted to put the garage in the same property there, and, and that's essentially, I mean, it's the same family, right, Barry?
So, we're adding the point one three six acres up to the point four three eight, it's all gonna be one lot.
All right.
All right.
Yes, sir. And I'll make a motion on that, so move.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Five oh and one, thank you. Uh, lot line variation, vacation of relocation for tax parcels five three oh two eighty-four B, um, five three oh two eighty-four D, for JBC Properties LLC, tax parcels four two nine dash two dash eighty-four A, for Albert's five LLC, and tax parcel five three oh dash two dash eighty-five for RGA Connor located on the south side of Fairview Street.
Okay, this one is a little bit hard to see on the right-hand side of the sheet, on the top of the right-hand side, you see, you see the black line coming there, what they did, they moved that line up from the, the line below, they moved on there. And the reason that they want to do that is to, is to make the lot conforming and have street access, okay? And basically, that's it.
Is that to get clearance on the, where Mac Lane southeast? Is that, am I seeing that correctly, Mr. Collins?
That will be added to the big lot now at the bottom, four point...
Eighty-four Quater delay?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, it's, so that lot will have street frontage, which it doesn't have right now, so it makes it more, more conforming than it was.
I still move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Clerk, are we ready?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Five zero. Uh, item C, right-of-way, one point one oh two acres, dedication for a new street, John Adams Drive Northwest, and temporary turnaround easement dedication, point one seven four acres of tax parcel four thirty-five A forty, dash forty, from Snyder Hunt Company LLP to the town of Christiansburg located off Quinn W. Stewart Boulevard Northwest.
Okay, so this is the, the new road that'll be put in, off of Quinn Stewart, uh, for the new apartments that are gonna be up there.
Okay.
I still move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk, call it off.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Five oh and one. Sub, are we ready? Subdivision platform for tax parcel five oh one dash one dash twenty-six A, creating lots one through twelve for Patricia Lane Town Homes, and public easement dedications for Shaw Development, S-H-A-A Development, located on the corner of Patricia Lane Southeast and Renox Street.
Uh, yes, sir, these are the twelve lots that they plan on building, the, the new townhomes, the townhomes in. And it's up Patricia Lane, it's, it's just the same street where the childcare center is, you know, off of Renox Street. I still move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
One question, Mr. Mayor, the one I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I got this right. This is, is this the area that's over there next to, um...
Right across from Huckleberry.
That's what I was gonna say, right across from Huckleberry. Okay, this is, all right. And this, this has already been approved, isn't it, Barry? This is just kind of a...
They came in for, I think it was resounding, uh, several months back.
Right, so this is just, okay, just fine tuning the, was the plan?
This is, this is an actual subdivision.
You're getting ready to build, yeah. Okay. And this is a Shaw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Thank you. Subdivision platform records of Kensington Phase Four, creating lots one through thirteen, and an open space parcel, point one five two acres, and a right-of-way dedication for Keystone Drive, point five eight seven acre, and public easement dedications located off Diana Drive.
Okay, so these are just thirteen lots that they want to get approved to have new construction, just on.
The subdivision's already, we have the plan, we have everything already.
We have the overall plan, and this is the next phase.
Okay, no, phase four we just, do you have a motion? Do you have a motion, we have a second, are we still looking at?
Second, I got a question though, is there any plan to put permanent pavement on Diana Drive? I've got, I know a couple people live off there that still has, seems to be the construction road that they put up.
I, well, I don't know if it's final, final pavement down or not, I don't think it is, I agree with, it'll be done before we accept the street, but I'll check on it for you.
Okay, thank you. And obviously Keystone will be paved, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it their builders, they usually will leave the streets that way until they've moved the trucks on and off, and so it doesn't wear and tear on it, is that their normal procedure?
Well, yes, it's one thing nice about when they do that, if there's any weak spots, we haven't taken the street over yet, they had to fix it before, they run all those heavy trucks over, and then they had to fix it before they turn it over to us, so, but we try to get them to put the first coat down so you don't track, don't track as much mud and all, do the other neighborhoods.
Mr. Helms, on lot one to lot seven, the shaded line, which also intersects with the cul-de-sac, what does, what does that symbolize? Is that, is that a drainage easement?
It is.
Okay, okay, that's all I, I was, some reason I was thinking, is that a path? I couldn't imagine it's a path, so...
You can't put a path over it.
And it's the same that runs the perimeter around from lots one through lot seven.
Okay.
But we can add a path over that, right?
And that, well, the trail, you know, would, would run along the, if you're looking at the plan, the left-hand side of the property, we come in from the adjacent, there's actually, the, the walking trails already built up to the property line, the, the adjacent subdivision. And then Mel, Melendez Melanie.
Is that on, is that to the left of lot eight through lot eleven, is that?
Okay, gotcha. That's correct.
Okay, so that, that, they grab the shaded line, inside the shaded line, the solid and the, the hatched?
Correct.
That's the, okay.
So then the trail would run, you know, along the back of lot eight, lot nine, lot ten, lot eleven, and then cut down between lots thirteen, twelve and thirteen, and connect with Diana Drive.
And would lots one through seven have, would there be any trail access or anything there, or would that just be, were they, were they about to pick it up, or?
Don't think so.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think they would come back to Diana, access the trail.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Yeah.
Councilman Shawalter?
Talking to your clays, boys, thank you. Thank you, Street Committee. Next is for council reports, and Mr. Collins, would you like to start us out?
Yes, sir, just wondering if we have, if we have anything yet from you folks about the political signs, or?
We are working with, staff is working on the sign ordinance, and that's gonna be a part, you're gonna be a part of that as soon as they, Barry, is it possible for staff to update us on that?
Well, yes, Andrew's gonna start working on that.
Okay.
And trying to move it over to the zoning ordinance, out of the advertising ordinance, and then we'll bring that back to you. I won't say how soon, but as soon as we can, Teresa will be reviewing it.
Has there anything on that yet? Panhandling?
Actually, I am working with Chief Sisson on that, and then we also have, I'm looking at your current code, as though we do have several provisions that...
Was that the panhandling, public safety issue for them?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, the Virginia Fire Service Council has asked Chief Hanks to draw on them as a combined department member, being paid and volunteers, and Chief Hanks has agreed to become a member.
Good, good, that's quite normal, I believe, it's an honor to do that, right?
It is, it is.
It's kind of like the firefighter's hall of fame, more or less. Mr. Hall?
Oh, okay.
I'm finished, yes.
Let me, let me go ahead and, I'm gonna use your term here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna beat the dead horse, but just as a reminder, April twenty-eighth at six PM in Pulaski General District Court is our child abuse prevention seminar, free to the public, of course, April, I said twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, April seventh is the one in Pulaski, April twenty-eighth at six o'clock is the one here in Montgomery County. NRV Care's their website, you can go on there if you want to order pinwheels, pinwheel gardens, or little signs that they go outside, again, all the proceeds are spent in, back into the community to help with parental, like parenting classes, support for families through mental health, and they, they have their hands in so many things that benefit our children, a lot very similar to our civic groups that we have in the town of Christiansburg, so I would recommend if anybody wants anything like that, you can go on site, and they still have them available, they have a, probably an influx of them this year because it's kind of a carry from last year where they couldn't get them in in time. Next recommission meeting is April fourth this year, I'm sorry, next month, at six PM, and the recommission will meet in the Recre- Recreation Center at six o'clock to seven, I believe that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Shawalter?
I'm not sure if Barry's gonna touch on this, but be expecting your draft budgets tonight?
In a few minutes, yes.
In a few moments, yeah. And I take it we're gonna start our work sessions here pretty soon, so be ready.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
I just wanted to compliment Mr. Collins on what a fine job he did on the Street Committee here, and...
I'll pay you later.
And Stipes will be very proud of what you picked up for the committee.
Well, you're very nice, thanks, sir.
You have to be, it's kind of funny, I've never seen so many things on the Street Committee in my life.
I've never even, I thought we were rebuilding the town.
In the mid-two thousand, two thousand four, two thousand five, we'd have two or three every council meeting.
You're saving them up for me, that's right.
Very good, anything else, Mr. Shepherd? I need someone that might be able to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting for me tomorrow, three to five, it's a liaison, you'll be there about thirty minutes maybe. Steve, you got it? Okay, I'll notify Sharon, I got granddaddy duty tomorrow. Now, on a more serious note, I would like to set a work session for March the thirtieth at five-thirty, depending on when John Anzvenino from Springstead can come up, it will be a closed work session, on, we will discuss applicants on the town manager search. I had responses from four to six of you that said that, that's a good time. Now, I would not, I probably not suggest that you mark the sixth and the eleventh off of your calendar, because we're gonna, we'll start hitting this thing pretty hot and heavy, once, once we get the list down, we'll start setting up interviews and so on and so forth, so if that is all right with you all, we will go...
What were the next two dates?
I think in my email to you, it was the sixth, the eleventh, and, and I think the other one was the night of a council meeting, so I didn't throw that one into play. I, I don't know, we'll, we'll set those at, as we finish with Springstead, so if that's all right with you all, we will, we will set those, and thank you very much.
And I'm just, I'm trying to recall, but last time we did those, it's been a while, of course, but they were, we probably were here for two and a half, three hours, it's gonna be all night, it's just, okay, that way when I'm on duty as myself, I can make sure I...
Yeah, I, I think so, I think the first step this time is, he will present resumes from ten, and we will whittle to five, and we will start, at that point, start interviewing or whittling back from five to three, if you remember how it was.
Absolutely, and I don't mean to put another duty on you, but just, I want to remind you that the mayor balanced you, officiated these, those types of proceedings, he also provided dinner.
I believe that was the discounted Wade's biscuits.
That's right.
Well, hopefully the doughnut people will be in, in business, so any, we can get some, at least a doughnuts, that'll do, the celebration.
Five thirty to six, or what, what time?
I, I wanted, I wanted just, I wanted to nail the date, and I'll come attack John tomorrow to see if five-thirty is a good time for him, or if we need to go to six. And honestly, with budgets coming up and everything else, we may just live here. So, Barry, you gotta shower at your office or not, okay, all right.
Do we, do we want to set that, the first work session on the budget, Mr. Mayor, since we're all here?
Are we ready for it yet? Barry's got it.
Oh, I was coming, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Okay, that's all I have.
Need to set two public hearings for Verizon lease up at the Hills Tank, they want to sell a building of a for sale tower, or for sale service, and put some antennas on the tank, like to set that for April twelfth, and like to set Stormwater fee, public hearing for April twenty-sixth.
Stormwater piece twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay, it's a public hearing, okay.
So moved.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Just the April twelfth, the public utility, I'm sorry, the public hearing for that, they're looking for not just sale, but, and data correct, both?
Hmm.
They're looking for...
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'd find, I think it will be data because, I mean, I'll sell service based on...
Are, are both of these, one of them a work session, or both of them public hearings?
Both of them public hearing.
Okay, on the fourth, on the twelfth or the twenty-sixth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Here.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Five oh and one, thank you, next.
I think Councilman Collins talked with the sheriff, and originally had a tour set up for April twenty-sixth, but he, I think he postponed that now.
I have a tip, but I can, yeah, yeah.
And that's the night of the work session, I'm sorry, the public hearing for the Stormwater Utility, just make sure I got my dates right.
Yeah.
You want me to reset it, or just wait?
Just wait, please.
Yeah.
Okay, they have a new program, the VML, it's called Local. New, no, Institute for Local Officials, it replaces the new elected officials program that they used to have, it will run from July the twenty-second to the twenty-third, starts at noon on twenty-second and ends at four on the twenty-third, it's open to all council members, so if you think you'd like to attend that...
Where's it at?
It's in Richmond. They're going, the topics are fundamentals, the serving as a council member, making the most of meetings, budgeting, Freedom of Information Act, Conflict of Interest Act, interacting with constituents, working with the media, and public officials liability.
Barry, did you get to go to a meeting, did you get to go to a meeting in Richmond without?
I have not, no, sir.
I will tell you that from my perspective, when I had a chance to go, I think Steve and I may have went together, six years ago maybe or something, it was real beneficial for me, it was a great crash course, frankly, it was just inundated with information for two days.
So, good, let Michelle know if you want to do that, she can make reservations and...
Anybody else going?
Most of us, nobody's there.
Oh, thank you, Dan. Nobody wants to travel with you.
Take your wife with you, drive to Internet or something.
Okay.
Tell me.
Before we hand out the budget, a budget work session, before you get all digging through it and forget that we need to have a work session. Nineteenth is an off Tuesday night, the fifth of April, well, those are Tuesday nights, but any night, basically, work, and if you have preference, sir.
You said that April fifth, what was the other day, Mr. Helms?
Nineteenth, those are both Tuesdays.
I can do either one of those, if we do the fifth, I, I just have a, I have a trial at four in Pulaski, it's probably gonna go an hour and a half, if we could just start at six at the earliest that day, it's, it's a late trial.
There's other...
I think usually we start about six anyway, and I'd be here at six, I just think we'll put that hour and a half.
Do it on the sixth, next night?
I'd rather do it on the fifth.
Fifth, yours is good.
Yeah, I just have, I just have, obviously, the trial on four to five, things can go a little bit over, so I could be here at six with no problem. Absolutely.
Anybody else good, Steve, you get on the fifth?
I can support that.
Fifth?
On the fifth, fifth or sixth?
All right.
Work session on the budget.
Now...
Now, can I have?
Yes. I didn't want to get sidetracked before.
Just a fear factor there, I guess.
Thank you.
So we had a great finance committee yesterday morning, and we had it finished up yesterday, but printing is an epidemic, so, you know, it takes all day, they had off the process at about five fifteen today. The two single sheets I'm handing you are the information on the donation requests, so that's just kind of off to the side for you, it's just a little additional, if you want more information besides the summaries on the donation requests, we can send those out to you.
I would, I would like to remind you, I have a question that we could talk about, the donations till the end, let's, let's deal with the main budget. In years past, we spent hours and hours on donations right off the bat, and I'd like to get into the budget, get that settled, and then move on to this.
Henry, let me ask you a question, just about this, that's since the first year I looked at, I see what they requested, what was requested by the five oh one C three organizations, but is there allocation in the budget yet, or is it literally left out?
It's in there.
It's in the, okay, so we'll be able to read and see where, what the recommendation from the finance committee is.
I'm gonna let Barry answer that and vouch, but it's in there.
Well, there's...
Add a later, Barry. This is, this is, this is, this is good to tweak your, your, your interest in, I don't think at this point tonight, I don't think it would be an official to get into the discussion.
I just don't, I'll be looking through it, trying to find, I just wonder if it's in here, so, although I'm looking, okay.
It's in there, it's in there. This is that, this is the sheet right here that you gave us in years past, for what, did they meet the criteria? So, again, we'll request that, you know, this is great information, but we deal with the donations or benevolence at the end of our work sessions, or we can...
That's the last thing if we need to cut.
Yeah.
I mean, it's basically, all right.
Page is fifty-seven, fifty-eight, so...
Thank you.
We should type the comments.
The only other comment I would make is that there's a good summary in the letter initially, and the summary of the budget and where we are, and all that stuff is in there, and I would encourage you to read that, kind of shows you where the budget, what's in there, what's included within the budget about merits and employee staffing and capital projects and reserve funds, so it kind of gives a good summary of what's in the budget at the present moment, and what's presented there, so.
And it's balanced?
Yes.
Mr. Helms, the presentation we had on, just looking at that page again, and I might go into financials at all, but that Christiansburg, heavenly, I'm mayor, what was the name of that group, it's...
Randy Bonner's group.
Yeah, the Children's Trust.
It's in there.
What is the moniker, is that under the NRV Care's Children's Advocacy, or, or is it?
Safe Haven Child Visitation Centers, is it?
No, that's separate.
Okay.
Is it what I said too, above that, NRV Care's Children's Advocacy?
Three, biggest the child advocacy one.
Okay, I see, okay, all right, thank you.
Any, anything else to come, Barry, are you done? I'm sorry, I'm about ready to shut you down.
Yes, sir.
Is that a yes, you're done?
Yes, I'm done.
I, I would guess if you study between now and then, or when you study between now and then on this budget, if there are questions that arise, is it, would you prefer, I would prefer that you, if you have them, direct them to Barry, with copy to all council, so we don't have to, so we won't be, maybe somebody picking up and emailing the same thing.
Yeah.
So, if that's, if that's an agreeable ground rule for you all, if you have questions on the budget, call Henry, he wrote it. No, it's, it's to email Barry and let Barry, instead of trying to vouch and everybody else, let's get it to one source, and copy council on the question in case, and it may answer a question somebody else may have, so, if that sounds reasonable.
It does, but if you would share it with everybody else.
That's, that's, that's what I like about, wanna do about this, who will know.
Before you hit that, I just want to say one thing, I know you mentioned my budget. I know you mentioned my budget. Uh, the staff worked very hard, um, it's pretty strict, at least on my request, but I want it to be presented whereas in years past, so, um, you're presenting with a zero. And we're not in, in the red, and we're not-
A balanced budget.
Yeah, we have a balanced budget, and I'd like to thank staff, Val, Randy, Barry, and of course, Department Heads for working hard on making that happen. Appreciate it, took a lot of, a lot of work on the ground, yeah.
Thank you.
Pretty easy, easier than normal process.
I can only say that that's, that's what Mr. Stipes said, yeah, correct.
Very good.
And I've got one quick question too, uh, and I think this is a, I need to really ask probably our town attorney on this. Um, earlier tonight, that we had, uh, we were talking about the Williams Trail Festival enclosing, uh, the street, and, um, of course, there was a motion, I made a motion, Henry seconded the motion, and then we discussed it. And, and my, my understanding through Robert's rules, that's the way we have to do that, is that right? We have to make a motion, have to get a motion on the floor that we can discuss the motion, is that correct?
I believe that's true under Robert's rules.
Okay, and the reason I say is, I didn't want anybody to think I stepped it on toes by trying to do it faster or anything. I, I, I feel like we have to have a motion in a second before we can actually discuss.
And that's how you normally, you normally handle it.
That's not how we don't really do it, I guess that's proper.
But, but I, but I, I also, I appreciate you, and Chief, and that information that was brought to us, but I just wanted to make sure I was right, 'cause I didn't want, if I was wrong, I wouldn't know I was wrong, so I could change that going forward, but, thank you.
But you have to understand, a lot of councils, they have their own rules, so, it's not as-
We use Robert's rules when it's their favor.
Not all of the rules.
So if it's our benefit, we'll use them, if not, we'll give them to somebody.
We'll have to check Robert at the door.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, is there anything else to come before council? We are adjourned, thank you all.